So this is the point of meeting where I always surprise someone by calling them on them to do the Pledge of Allegiance or to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And since Valentine's is coming up, there's a couple in the front row that are married that I thought I'd call on them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
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 Thank you.
You're welcome. And we will move on to the consent agenda. And I would ask the board, but their pleasure is regarding approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on January 8th of 2020.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Mark. We have some discussion. Then we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Euquitus?
Yes.
Bohan?
Yes.
And next, we have approval of accounts for the lump of January. But it's your pleasure.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Mark.
Go ahead.
Okay. And Dr. Sitwala, so. Okay. And discussion? And we'll go ahead and take the vote.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Euquitus?
Yes.
Ms. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have any communications from the public?
Anyone fill out a pink sheet?
Okay. And we'll move on to correspondence. We do have a correspondence folder. So I will be passing this.
If I might, there's correspondence that I forgot to pass on to Jenny, pass on to the board that I'd like to share. We, I've been working on a project in Albania for the last few years. And they are working through UNICEF and through the YWC of Albania to try to implement positive behavior interventions for PBIS. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you to the School District of Marshfield and Kim Zimbo for sharing all of our materials. So in Albania, in some obscure country in Europe, they are using the School District of Marshfield PBIS thanks to, thanks to their expertise. And it's kind of cool because it's going to be implemented countrywide. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Very interesting. Thank you. Okay. Then we have a lot of fun things to talk about that are going on in our schools. We're going to start with Career in Tech Education.
Yeah, I've got a pretty good listing of announcements here that relate to the fact that February is Career in Technical Education, which is what we call CTE. It's CTE Month in Wisconsin and across the nation. And we wanted to take a moment to read through some of these specialized recognition weeks that we have going on this month because we have, in the School District of Marshfield, the best CTE department in programming and students doing a lot of great work here in Marshfield. So we want to take the opportunity to promote our CTE and reflect on the value of career and technical education for all of our students, the workforce, and our economy. It is a time to inform students, parents, school personnel, and counselors, community members, and legislators about CTE programs, student success, and the impact on future employment. The School District of Marshfield takes enormous pride in its extensive CTE offerings in preparing students to be career and college ready. To learn more about the Marshfield Career and Technical Education Program, we would encourage you to visit www.marsfieldschools.org/CTE. Now specifically within the CTE area, we would like to take some time to talk about FBLA, FCCLA, and FFA. Last week was FBLA Week. FBLA is a professional business organization dedicated to bringing business and education together in a positive working relationship through innovative leadership and career development programs. And members perform community service activities and strive to build students' understanding of the realities of the modern business world. The second area that was also celebrated last week is Skills USA, which is a student organization where students practice personal or workplace and technical skills. FCCLA, which is Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, will, is being recognized actually this week, February 10th through the 14th. FCCLA is a student organization offered at both the high school and middle school here in Marshfield. Its mission is to promote personal growth and leadership development through family and consumer sciences education. Focusing on the multiple roles of family, of family member, wage earner, and community leadership, members develop skills through work, develop skills for life through career development, character development, critical and creative thinking, interpersonal communication, practical knowledge, and career preparation. And then finally on the listing here, but certainly not least for CTE is FFA, which we have right here in front of us and will be hearing from members of our Marshfield High School FFA program here in a little while. Each year, FFA chapters around the country celebrate National FFA Week that will be celebrated here coming up in a couple of weeks, February 22nd through the 29th. It's a time of year to share with local, state, and national audiences what FFA is all about and the impact that it has on its members every day. We're extremely proud of the local success and positive events in our local FFA chapter and all of the great things that they've got going on right here in Marshfield. So thank you, and we're looking forward to seeing you here in a few minutes. Lastly, I also want to take the opportunity to note that it is also School Bus Driver Appreciation Week. This is a time of year to recognize more than the 15,000 school bus drivers across the state of Wisconsin. These drivers practice the highest standards to ensure the protection of our students and their passengers, which are our students every day. So we extend a great thanks to all of our school bus drivers here at the School District of Marshfield. And that concludes our announcements. Thank you.
Very nice. And we are proud of all these things going on in our schools, especially at the high school, but also for the students. I would like to take time now for us to recognize the district spelling bee winner, and we have Ms. Southworth here. Do you have a presentation? Thank you.
If you are one of the finalists, you can come on up with me.
(Inaudible)
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 Good evening. I'm very excited to share with all of you our district spelling bee finalists, our district spelling bee champion, and then some very special results from our regional. Our school district spelling bee took place in January on the 16th at Washington Elementary School and the gym. There were 17 official rounds, and the champion or the championship word was vacate. With the help and support of the Poanis Club, I would like to announce to all of you our finalists and then our champion. So one of our finalists was Kylie Winter from the middle school. She's not here tonight. Ezra Day from Washington Elementary School. Erin Rieckinger from Lincoln Elementary School. Sterling Welcome from Washington Elementary School. And then Neil Gunagunta from Grant Elementary School. Oliver Johnson also was a finalist, and he goes to Grant Elementary School. I'd like to take a moment, though, to officially introduce to all of you our district spelling bee champion, who is Sterling Welcome. And he gets a very special item to take home, the trophy that was sponsored by the Poanis Club. So I'd like to give all of them a round of applause.
Some other special news that I would like to share with you is that the regional bee took place last week in Wisconsin Rapids on February 5th. And there were 21 students that participated, and our school district had the top three. So I find that to be very special, and I would like to honor the three of them. So in third place, we had Erin Rieckinger from Lincoln. We had Sterling Welcome as second place. And then our 2020 Regional Bee Champion that is going to participate at State in Madison on March 7th is Neil Gunagunta. I would like to take this opportunity to wish Neil good luck on his future spelling endeavors at State, but also give this group, a very special group, another round of applause.
Is a trophy from State?
Regional.
Regional. Yeah. I mean from regional. Right. Thank you.
Not State, yeah.
(Laughter) It's going to State.
Yep. And then Sterling got a very cool trophy from the Poanis Club for being our district champion. Very cool.
Thank you, Ms. Southworth. You're welcome. And Jenna Southworth is the principal at Washington School. Thank you very much. And next, we would like to recognize our Geography Bee Winners. All right, Geography Bee Winners, come on up. And this is Brooke Bargender.
Brooke Bargender, the principal at Lincoln Elementary. So this evening, I have the Geography Bee School Winners with me. So every school year, all five elementary schools participate in the National Geographic Geography Bee. And they have their medals on that they receive and their certificates that they get at the school. But I'd like to introduce them all to you and give them a little candy here for their efforts, since I don't have a big trophy like Jenna had. So let's start off here with, from Grant Elementary, we have Neil Gunagunta, sixth grader. From Lincoln Elementary, Justin Franks, a fifth grader. From Madison Elementary, Nathan Burdan. From Nasonville Elementary, Maria McKee, sixth grader. And from Washington, oh, this is awesome, Sterling. Sterling Welcome, fifth grader. So just a side note, too, all of them have already taken the state qualifying exam, too, online at their schools. And we'll find out on March 2nd if any of them qualify for the state bee, which will be on March 27th. So great job to all of them. Good luck if you get to participate in the next one, and hopefully we get good results, right? Congratulations, and one more round of applause to all.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for our partner, for our performance. We will go on to district staff reports, and we'll have a super.
Yeah, I've got some additional items that I wanted to run through to begin with, which is probably most important to our students, is just a quick reminder to our parents that are out there that might be watching the program. A reminder that next Monday, we have no school. We have a kind of a mid-winter break day, and that is Monday, February 17th. So just a reminder out there, no school next Monday. We're coming up on a new school year already. It's hard to believe, planning preparation. So we wanted to announce that kindergarten registration is currently open. Registration can be completed online through Skyward Family Access. Visit www.marsfieldschools.org for more information. For those without access to the internet, we do have computers available here at our board office at this location, 1010 East Port Street here in Marshfield. Families currently seeking to open enroll to the School District of Marshfield, we'd like to remind you that the open enrollment applications are available at the DPI website. This following URL is www.dpi.wi.gov backslash open enrollment with a dash in between open towards open enrollment. The window for the open enrollment process is February 3rd and closes on April 30th of 2020. The way things work with this process with our State Department of Public Instruction, everything is done electronically. So please be advised, there are no paper applications anymore. The website that I just referred to is where you need to go to complete things. There is also a Q and A available if you have questions regarding the open enrollment process at that website and get more information on that. Early or late applications cannot be accepted, so please be advised by those dates. Again, it's open now and runs through the end of April. Also want to note that if you do not have a computer or internet access, again, we do have one available here at our board office. Otherwise, we'd remind you of our local school libraries as well. Registration information. We have some dates set here for the middle school. Registration for sixth grade students entering seventh grade next year for those students and their parents. We have that open house happening at the middle school cafeteria following dates, Monday, March 2nd, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And that is specifically for students, sixth graders currently attending Grant and Washington Schools. The date for Lincoln, Madison, and Nasonville School students is Tuesday, March 3rd from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. I would certainly encourage you to attend on those assigned dates for your schools, but if that conflicts with parent schedules, you're certainly welcome to attend the alternate night as well. Any sixth or seventh graders attending any of our non-public schools currently or planning to open enroll or currently homeschooled and planning to come to the Unified School District of Marshfield next year, you are certainly invited to attend, and you may choose either of those two nights.
If you didn't catch the link for the open enrollment, it is featured on our website, marshfieldschools.org. And so you'll see one of those pages that come up, and you can just click that and get that connection.
And then one last item that I'd like to read through is related to our Student Leadership Academy Retreat. On February 1st, we had 24 exceptional and enthusiastic sixth grade students representing Grant, Lincoln, Madison, Nasonville, and Washington Elementary Schools. They participated in a Leadership Academy Retreat at Marshfield Clinic Health System Conference Center. This group of young leaders has been diligently following a year-long program cultivating their recognized leadership skills and their service aptitudes. A leadership Marshfield group through Mackey organized this whole day hands-on retreat back on February 1st. The goal of this event was to unveil what the seven habits of highly effective teens can mean in a person's life, and especially for young people. The Adult Leadership Marshfield Group wanted to impress upon these young leaders how influential and important their interactions can be with others in their daily lives. In addition, they were taught to spread their habits onto others around them and to generate more leaders amongst their peer groups. So again, we're very happy with that leadership group and wanted to take a moment to recognize their effort during that retreat. And that concludes my report. I think we're on to the main event now, Mr. Hay.
Yes. Yes. And that, he is referring to our parliamentary procedure demonstration by our FFA.
All right. So Tim, as you're coming up, we'll let you take a moment to introduce your group, and we're going to step off to the side so the crowd here can see your team.
So while they're getting set up, so this is our FFA Parliamentary Procedure Team. It's one of the competitions that FFA has. They have contests for different careers. You can leave the table if you want. Yeah. Okay. You guys can come on. The Parliamentary Procedure Contest is one that's a long-running contest in FFA to teach kids how to run meetings properly, using motions, amendments, and all of that stuff that you guys see at these meetings so much, and to learn how to run meetings effectively and efficiently. And so we have, we've been pretty successful in that over the years. And so we have our team this year is a mixture of high school and middle school students, actually. Why don't you guys introduce yourselves to the crowd?
Oh, I'm Mateo Kowalski. I'm Faith Barney.
I'm Adanga.
I'm Jessica Lindo.
I'm Joshua Lindo.
And I'm Reyna Simone.
And they have been practicing now for, well, some of them for a few years. They've been, we've been working on it. Middle schoolers have been just doing it. This is your second here for Josh, and Jess is first. And so they, we just competed at the first level of our competition, the district contest, last night, and they won there, so that's cool. And they're going to be moving on to the sectional levels, and then hopefully on the state, and if they win at state, then on the nationals. And so hopefully we can make her on to the state level by winning later on here in April. What they do, just so you kind of understand how this goes, because it goes pretty quickly in terms of everything kind of moving fast, they're going to be like in the middle of a meeting, and an item of business is going to come up for them. They have blue sheets in front of them that they would get at the contest that would tell them what the item of business is that they have to deal with. And then they have five different abilities, five different types of things that would come up in that, in that, like making amendment or different types of things like that, that they would have to deal with off of a larger list of possible ones. And then they have to also do five other of their own types of abilities tied into that. Each one of them has to do an extra one. And then they're also graded on their debates that they have. So they each have to do several debates on the various motions that are debatable. And so they're, they're limited on their time as well, and so that's a time thing. And so I've given them the stuff ahead of time here tonight, so at least they've got it, so they don't have to get the extra, like, minute to just sit here and look at their sheets. So they should be ready to go. With that, I'll let Reyna, our chairperson, take over.
Members, what is the next item of business? Madam Chair.
Faith. I move that our chapter host a district volleyball tournament.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that our chapter hosts a district volleyball tournament. Is there any debate?
Madam Chair.
Faith. I'm in favor of this motion because our 4H program already does a sports volleyball tournament, which is very successful. So if the FFA does it, it will hopefully also be successful. Vote yes.
Madam Chair.
Josh.
I'm opposed to this motion because it is winter out. We have no availability for our outdoor courts. And if we were doing indoor, our big fieldhouse is booked all through till the middle of April, and we need to do it sooner than later. So vote no.
Madam Chair. Jessica.
I am opposed to this motion because if we do it now, we only have 10 members in our FFA club that actually play volleyball and are on our team, and they can't play while it's during season time because right now they have an extra group thing that some members are in. So if they're on that group, they can't be playing, so we wouldn't have a very good turnout. So for this reason, vote no.
Madam Chair.
Emma. I'm in favor of this motion because it would give a, it would be a great way for our students to interact with other chapters, and they would meet new friends, so therefore vote yes.
Madam Chair.
Josh.
I move to amend this motion by striking the word volleyball and inserting the word basketball.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to amend the motion by striking out the word volleyball and inserting the word basketball so that the motion would be for our chapter to host a district basketball tournament. Is there any debate?
Madam Chair.
Josh.
I'm in favor of this amendment because volleyball is more aimed towards just girls, but basketball is aimed to more boys and girls. So that means we would be able to have more diversity and more fun with this than having just girls do volleyball. So vote yes.
Madam Chair.
Mateo. I'm opposed to this motion as it is currently basketball season, and the basketball players are not able to do anything outside of their sport during their season. Therefore, vote no.
Madam Chair.
Faith. I am, I'm opposed to this motion because our, this amendment, because we are having a basketball tournament in a week, and that, and having another one a few weeks after will not make any sense. Vote no.
Madam Chair. Emma. I'm also opposed to this amendment as the basket, as the gym is booked with, or every weekend, as Josh had said, for volleyball tournaments, but they're the same thing, so we'd not have any room or space to do it. Therefore, vote no.
Question of privilege.
Question of privilege has been raised. Josh, what is your question?
It is getting too bright in here. Can we dim the lights?
You may not dim the lights. Is there any further?
Madam Chair.
Jessica.
I am in favor of this motion because if we do a basketball one, we could have two different tournaments within different times. And if we have two tournaments, the one we do right now is a really good turnout, and if we do one later on, maybe we can get more members and have a better turnout for it. So for this reason, vote yes.
Madam Chair. Mateo. I'm still opposed to this motion as the last time we had a basketball tournament, there were a lot of people that were sent to the hospital. Therefore, vote no.
See none will proceed. Vote. All who are in favor of amending the motion by striking out the word volleyball and inserting the word basketball so that the motion would be for our chapter to host a district basketball tournament, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, say no.
No.
Motion.
Division of Assembly.
Division of Assembly has been called. We will proceed to revoting. All who are in favor, please signify by standing. One Madam Secretary. All who are opposed, please stand. Four Madam Secretaries. The motion fails one to four. We will not amend the motion.
Madam Chair.
Emma. I move to postpone this motion to next meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to postpone until next week the motion that our chapter hosts a district volleyball tournament. Is there any debate?
Madam Chair.
Emma. I'm in favor of postponing this motion as we are missing half of our members due to a sports banquet tonight, and we would have more members next time. So therefore, vote yes.
Madam Chair.
Josh.
I'm opposed to postponement because next, our, our regularly scheduled meeting, the weather's planning that'd be really crappy and a lot of snow, and we might have to cancel because of so much snow. So vote no.
Madam Chair.
Jessica.
I am opposed to this postponement because as at the next meeting, we have the officers going to a meeting, and if we don't have our officers, we really can't run a meeting. And if we don't have a meeting, well, then we can't debate on it. So for this reason, vote no.
Madam Chair.
Mateo. I'm opposed to this postponement as there is also, as a lot of people are gone tonight, there's also a banquet happening next week, and even more people will be gone for that. Therefore, we will not have an accurate vote. Vote no.
Is there any further debate? See none will proceed. Vote. All who are in favor of postponing until the next meeting motion that our chapter hosts a district volleyball tournament, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, say no.
No.
Motion fails. We will not postpone this motion.
Parliamentary inquiry.
Parliamentary inquiry has been raised. Faith, what is your inquiry? What is the vote requirement on main motion? Our main motion requires a majority vote.
Madam Chair.
Jessica.
I move to refer this to the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee the motion that our chapter hosts a district volleyball tournament. Is there any debate?
Madam Chair.
Jessica.
I'm in favor of this motion because they will know what the best way is to do this, and if we have allowances for this in our budget, and if we don't have this in our budget, then we really can't do it. So they will have the most knowledgeable reasoning on whether to do this or not. So for this reason, vote yes.
Madam Chair.
Faith. I am opposed, I'm, I am opposed to this motion because our, our committee only has five people on it, and we have 162 people in our FFA, so the committee will not be able to make as logical decision as we would it during our meeting. Vote no.
Madam Chair.
Josh.
I'm in favor of this referral because our main treasurer, who handles all of our finances on that committee, and he, and they will help us figure out if this is going to be worthy enough if our expense, our income and expenses are. So vote yes.
Madam Chair.
Emma. I'm opposed to this, this referral as the members will be the ones participating in this event, so why should the, should the committee make the decision when they're not the ones participating? Therefore, vote no.
Madam Chair.
Mateo. I'm opposed to this referral because there really isn't anything that has to do with finance and making this decision since we already have the supplies and things we need. Therefore, vote no.
Madam Chair.
Faith.
I am still opposed to this referral because out of the five of the members of the committee, four of them are new members, so they will not have as much of the experience as some of the officers and other members in our chapter. Vote no.
Is there any further debate? Seeing none will proceed. Vote. All who are in favor of referring to the Finance Committee the motion that our chapter hosts a district volleyball tournament, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, say no.
No.
Motion fails. We will not refer this to the Finance Committee.
Madam Chair.
Mateo.
I move to lay on the table the motion for our chapter to host a district volleyball tournament.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to lay on the table the motion that our chapter hosts a district volleyball tournament. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, say no.
No.
Motion fails. We will not lay this motion on the table. Is there any further debate?
Madam Chair.
Mateo.
I'm still opposed to this motion as all of our volleyball courts, we are far away. We would have to drive at least thirty minutes to get there. And a lot of our members do not like traveling that far. Therefore, vote no.
Request for information?
Request for information has been called. Emma, what is your request?
When is the volleyball tournament going to be held?
March thirty-first. Is there any further debate? Seeing none will proceed. Vote. All who are in favor that our chapter hosts a district volleyball tournament, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes. Our chapter will host a district volleyball tournament.
Madam Chair.
Mateo.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, say no. Motion passes. Are there any announcements? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
So you get an idea how fast things go, that they've got to do a lot of thinking on their feet as they're up there because they get the, when they come into the contest, they get the motion sitting on their chair. They get one minute to look at them and then come up with debates and everything all on that. They shorten up their debates a little bit here tonight compared to what we do at contests. So you can imagine where it's got to go. But yeah, that's kind of a feel for what they do. So they have to know Robert's Rules of Order pretty well for all the different types of motions that are out there. So good job, guys. Well done. Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the gifts donations to the district. And the board is asked to accept the following. A donation to Grant School of Clothing for students valued at forty dollars from Emmanuel Lutheran Church in Hewitt. A gift to Lincoln Elementary of Classroom Snacks valued at seventy-five dollars from Cornerstone Church. Two gifts to Madison Elementary. First, sleds and items for the school store valued at one hundred dollars from Carolyn Baum. And clothing for students valued at fifty dollars from Emmanuel Lutheran Church in Hewitt. And the last item is, in general, a Cascade storage unit valued at thirteen hundred and seventy dollars from Demco. What is the board's desire regarding these gifts?
Move to approve with thanks. Move to accept with thanks.
Thank you, Kate. In a second. Thank you, Mark. And we'll go ahead and take the vote then.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Shulman?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Mr. Ukitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Kernardi?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
And once again, thank you to the community for these generous gifts.
Geez, I think I'm going to see everything faster than now.
We will move on to Policy Legislation Committee.
Great, thanks. Our committee met today. Thank you, Jenny, for having me in today so fast. We had a light agenda, but it was a really interesting agenda today. The first agenda item that we covered was actually one that the board directed us to look at, and that was related to school trips. And just to refresh everyone's memory, as we accept or approve school trips, there's inevitably one of the school board members that says something about, you know, we want to make sure that we've got equal access, that students who, you know, may not have the same financial means as some other families still has equal opportunity to participate in these trips. And so the policy committee was asked to look at it, and we discussed it at one meeting. And then today, Ryan lined up for us some of the folks that are tirelessly working to do school trips. And I just have to say, I know that the school trips are a lot, but it felt like they're doing a whole other full-time job when they're organizing some of these trips with the spreadsheets and the finances. And so just my hat's off to every staff person in the district who provides these amazing opportunities for our students. But specifically, we looked at the music program and we also looked at the Spanish Club and their class trips. And it was a really good discussion. Really, we wanted to know if, A, they felt in either one of those scenarios that students were being left out, that if there was a problem with, you know, unequal access to these trips. And B, if there were any situations where students were trying to go to the trip and they couldn't raise the money, or were there ample opportunities? And it was a really good meeting because in both of those situations, and I would say on all of the situations, I do believe that every effort is needed to ensure that there's equal access for students to go on those trips. And there's also a lot of opportunity for students to fundraise to be able to go on those trips. And there have been a couple of examples that were shared today where churches or organizations will step up to help offset some of the costs of the trip. So we had really thought about, do we need to work with the community foundation to establish some kind of scholarship fund for school trips? And I think where we landed, it was a non-action item, but where I think we all sort of landed was, really feels like it's a good process right now. And we left the meeting by saying if there's anything that the school board can do to help facilitate these trips, and if there ever does seem to be a barrier for students to let us know. But it was a really good opportunity for us to make sure that we're checking ourselves to make sure that in a public school district, that we do have equal access, that students do have equal access to the trips. And I left that particular agenda item feeling like our district is doing a really good job of making sure that if kids want to go on trips, that they have the ability to fundraise. And for example, if a student wants to fundraise for the entire trip, there's trips every two years, for example, with the Spanish Club, they could actually fundraise for three full years to go on that trip. So there's ample opportunity for them to fundraise. And the other thing that was interesting was the faculty and the staff that are overseeing the trips make sure that any of the fundraisers have at least a forty percent profit margin for the students. So they're not making, you know, ten cents, you know, a chocolate bar or whatever. They're actually making some pretty significant fundraising through those activities. So that really is my take on it, but I'll throw it over to Sam or Karen to add anything that was missed.
I felt good about the discussion. And I think, you know, we did, I think, highlight that there are some unknowns about whether, and I think that the staff did acknowledge that there probably are students that aren't coming to approach them with a need because they think it's so far out of reach. So I thought it was nice so that we were able to offer, hey, if there's something that we can do. And we did sort of highlight a possibility with using the community foundation if we find that that need is there. And I think that was good to get that out there, that in their minds, that there is another way to handle that some of this that takes the burden off of them to be trying to figure out a way for one student if we do, we could in the future consider that at some point if they feel that we need to trigger that.
Thanks. Karen?
Yeah, I think it was a great discussion, and I do think that they would feel more free to come, explain if they hit roadblocks or they identify, now that awareness of our concern has been heightened, to think about, you know, to make sure it is fair, equitable, accessible. And they'll let us know if they see any new concerns along the way.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you. The other agenda item was under new business, and it was a future agenda item a few months ago, was looking at the student dress code policy. And again, this wasn't born out of any official complaint or problems, but rather proactively looking at dress code policies specifically in the middle and the high school. So we had representatives from the school building administration for both the high school and the middle school present. And just a couple of highlights in the high school, it was interesting. The biggest problem with dress code, and I have to say, both schools didn't say this is a big problem that, you know, we need to fix, but, you know, pushed to say, what's the problem with the dress code? It was interesting, in the high school, it's really like hats and jackets and funky sweaters and messenger bags. And it's interesting that at the high school, there's more violations with boys than there are with girls. Because one of the things that we wanted to do, when we look at the dress code policy, which is pretty much the mirror image of the middle and the high school, really, if you look at that dress code policy, it's more leaning towards restricting clothing items for females than it is for males. So we were kind of worried about potential gender bias, but we certainly didn't find that that was the case whatsoever. At the middle school, there are more female students than there are males that are given coaching about their attire. And a lot of it is shirts that are showing the midriff. And we heard that about ninety-nine percent of the students are really compliant, and that parents are really supportive of it too overall. So we really charged the administrators in both buildings to go back to their teams and have a conversation about dress code. Is the policy working? Are there anything, you know, anything that needs to be updated or adapted with the dress code? Is it being uniformly enforced, et cetera, et cetera? And to come back to us. But really, I think it was, Sam had compared some other policies from other schools. We have a pretty good policy.
And I think what I was surprised by is the conversations I had with some community members, because this was coming up, highlighted restrictions that don't exist in our policy at all.
Right.
That we have really kept it relatively loose, which I think is where it needs to be.
Right.
So it was, yeah, that was interesting.
Yeah, it's anecdotal, especially in the middle school, that when they're wearing skirts. It's also in the high school that it has to be longer than your...
Than your arms. Your shorts and your skirts are supposed to be longer than your arms hanging down on the side of your legs. And that does not exist.
It's not in the policy, but the students think it is.
So just so everyone knows, you don't have to hang your arms down.
The other one that we also just mentioned briefly was that there is mention of bandanas, that you can't wear bandanas, and that, but yet girls can wear, especially athletes can wear the headbands. And so some boys complained, well, that's not fair. If the girls can wear a headband, how come the boys can't? So again, we want administrators to look at that, like, why do we have a, like, I'm not, I don't really care if a boy wears a headband, if a girl can wear a headband too. So he also said, if there's things that need to come out of the policy that just don't make sense, you know, we don't want people to enforce policies just for the sake of enforcing a policy if it doesn't really make sense. So it was a good, it was a good report out item.
Very good, yeah. We haven't had any significant issues of community members or parents or students complaining about the policy.
Right.
This was, as you said, kind of getting it in the name just to review, as there have been some nationally reported concerns in other districts, well, in Wisconsin and around the country. But we're not there.
No.
We don't have that. Because I think we have a well-designed policy.
Yeah. And again, the purpose of the policy committee is to review policies. So, you know, it's feast or famine. Sometimes we're updating lots of policies, and sometimes we have the ability to just look at a policy and revisit it to make sure it's working. And I think in this case, the dress code policy works and we're not seeing any problems. So that's great. So that was it for, there was no action item. It was just a special. Future agenda items, it's student handbook time. So next month, we will be reviewing the high school, the middle school, and the alternative school student handbook. And that will be a first reading at the March meeting. And then the additional student handbooks will follow in months shortly thereafter. So also payroll authorization has been a future agenda item for quite some time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We will move on to Mr. Pikes and employee contributions.
Do not meet.
And finance.
Finance, we did meet. We began meeting, reviewed the month of bills for January. There weren't any questions on that. Things looked very good. Washington School, we had an issue. Water heater went out. It's going to cost about nine thousand dollars, which we're going to be, we'll go over budget approximately seventy-five hundred dollars for the fiscal year. But Pat and his team are working on putting money together. These are things that, as they happen, we've got to take care of. Then we moved into an update on the 2020-21 budget. Budget process has begun. Staff budgets are due to building administrators by March 6th. District budgets are due to business office March 27th. Administration will be meeting with security health plan in near future. Based on utilization trends, there's a potential for double-digit increase for the next fiscal year. So hopefully, they can get something done with security health and get that brought down some because double digits to me are just unacceptable. We ran into a five-year budget projections. As we all know, a lot of that is best guess, but somehow they seemed to put it together and come out pretty close. Along with that five-year budget, we rolled right into the discussion of the tentative timeline for the future budget planning and possible referendum. As we all know, our last referendum will be coming to an end. And typically, this coming November is when we would be voting on a new referendum. From what we could see on the five-year budget, this is going to be a discussion we're going to be bringing out and possibly going to a referendum. So that money will be coming to an end.
For those who are new to the area, it's an operational referendum.
And operational.
All that money goes directly into our daily operations. So without it, we would have to trade those things.
That is correct. And we had update on note anticipation. This is the borrowing and future cash flow. A lot of it to do with the athletic facility. We had borrowed five million dollars, which two million of that has been paid back. And we have another two million that we can use. What you do borrow, you cannot re-borrow again. So that's all due to the athletic facility being built. And as the donations come in, because donations just don't all come in at one time. So over time, the donations will come in and they're there and will cover the fees. So, yes.
The note is actually the line of credit, correct? That's what I'm talking about. So it's not necessarily...
It's considered a note anticipation note with a flexible call feature, it's called. It kind of works like a line of credit, but it's not really a line of credit, I guess.
So it's not necessarily all used that's available?
Right.
May I ask a question? So if I understand correctly, that is in place because, as you said, Mark, donations are coming in slowly. So this is sort of to cover that outlay that we had to have to get the facility built.
Right.
And we are slowly paying that back. It's not added debt technically.
Correct. That will be repaying before the term.
Because we know where those funds are coming from. We're not having to find a way to...
Yep.
And I don't know if I quite said it right, but when we first set this up, we had set it up that we could borrow up to seven million dollars. And five million is what we had borrowed already. So there would be two million left, and Pat and his team have already made, paid back two million and a five.
Oh, two million and a five. Okay, I do not understand that. Okay, thank you.
All right. And also, we reviewed the list of service contracts, supplies and materials. Every year, they come with a vendor list, and that vendor list is who they use to purchase items from, could be pencils all the way up to one of the contractors coming in and doing some work, mows it. So that list, it's very lengthy. It's in Word docs, you can take a look at it. Last, we reviewed and discussed the report on a variance report. The report shows how the district's finance compared from year to last year, and that looked very good. So that is all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Very informative. We will move on to curtailment instructions. So I will turn this over to Mr. Pikes because that's me. First, we talked about the Project Life Agreement. First, we talked about the Project Life Agreement. And just to kind of give you an idea, Project Life is the feeder program into Project Search. And it was implemented at the start of this school year. Prior to Project Life, the program was known as the Community Transition Program. The new program provides a half-day of classroom instruction and then a half-day of on-the-job work experience within the community for 18 to 21-year-olds that have special needs. The program is, as I said, similar to Project Search. Students complete an application and they participate in an interview to qualify for the program. Administration recommended the program operate under 66.03 agreement, which is similar to Project Search, which we've had in that type of agreement. This would be the fourth year, I think, at least. And that allows students from other districts to come and take part in our program and can generate revenue for the district. Such agreements require board approval on an annual basis. So for instance, Project Search in the 16, 17 school year brought in about $8,700. The next year it was $23,800. The next year it was $37,000. With the Project Life Agreement, they're planning on capping it at six students. We have four of our students already in here. I think I'm not this right, Tracy. And so that frees up a little space for taking a couple of students from somewhere else, but the intent is not to grow it too fast. Then we looked at the 4K program and evaluation update. And we got a little timeline on the evaluation process for this year. So if anyone is interested in seeing any of that, we have that here. And from September to December, a team worked on co-creating the evaluation topics. And during the next phase, they'll be collecting information and data. And once that has been collected, they'll be analyzing that and re-examining the program goals and identifying the strengths and areas for improvement. A written final report with actionable recommendations will come to the board based on agreed program goals. And that should probably be August of 2020. And we'll provide additional updates as needed or requested. A couple of things, in the past, there was an outside consultant that came in and did the evaluation, but the consensus of the administrative people and our partners in the community was that we didn't need that, that we were in a position where we can effectively do that with the communications we now have going on between our community partners and the district. And second of all, even they are looking at the Young Star ratings, but just in general because it's only as it applies to 4K. And at this point in time, they're not seeing, in other words, it's kind of uniform throughout all those centers. In other words, at one point in time, there might be a couple here and a four here, and another time it might be different. But for the most part, the things are more items that the state looks at, you know, if you're hanging a particular notice to the public in a certain place versus somewhere else. And so unless something crops up that's more, you know, applicable to our students and our 4K students, there won't be a lot of resources put into continuing to track all those and look into what was done about everything. Did I say that right? Okay. So obviously if something major comes up, we would...
Can I just refresh my memory? Because I thought that the Young Star, the previous Young Star report, the only Young Star report that I saw about, well, last summer I would say, or early summer, was, was showing some disparate scores. So are you saying that those are not apparent?
We're just not using it as evaluation as a tool because it's not a tool we can consistently use at all of our sites. We can only, and the other issue we have with Young Star is it does not identify whether the violation exactly happened in a 4K or did not happen in a 4K. So we don't want to disregard it just for this evaluation. We're not going to use it as a tool. Still keep an eye on it, still review if there's violations with the directors like we have in the past, look at how we can support, you know, their correction plan. But we're not using it as a tool in this evaluation.
And then we'll move on to the next topic, which was the spring curriculum board review timeline. And I, we do have a copy of that also if anyone wants to see it. But in capsule summary, the K-12 Physical Education and Health Curriculum will be presented as a first reading in March of this year. And it will be brought forward for board approval in May. And the K-12 Science and 7 to 12 Agriculture Curriculums will be presented for first reading in April of this year and brought to the board for approval in June. So that kind of update you won't want to expect there. And then we have the Volunteer Professional Development Update. And basically we looked at the eight strands of professional development that were offered in 2019 and 2020 for supplemental compensation for our staff. And then the staff are surveyed every other year to assist with developing offerings for the following year. So if anyone is interested in more information on those strands, we have that also. And then we can cut for some.
Future agenda, give the list, those are...
We are going to be looking at the Community Learning Centers, the CLC update. And that's an after-school program center grant.
Questions for our curriculum chair, curriculum and instruction chair? If not, then we present the hold agenda.
Thank you. Then we will move on to Facilities, Safety and Transportation.
All right, we did meet. We got an update on long-range facility planning. The first facility planning committee meeting was held on January 27th. Pretty much it was a meeting for the committee to get to meet, meet HSR and associates, get to learn each other what the study that we had done and kind of where they're going to start working. So they're going to come back together here in February and then March and April. So with that committee, then they'll bring back and kind of help structure to where we want to be and where we want to start. So with that plan. Then we just discussed the Maple program. Basically, we, I, I had them bring it back. I wanted to take a look at the plan and look at the room layout. So right now they're finalizing the drawings. And once the plans are finalized, they'll put it out for bid. Anticipated start date for that project is early June. I believe you all seen the plan for that one. And if you haven't, take a look at it.
And that's the middle school personalized line?
Yes. Yep. Then we got an update on the school fires project. Project was, should be all completed, I believe. And we had expressed interest about all of the meeting out there in February. If you guys get out there, take a look, Ron had brought some pictures of the fireplace and at the bottom and what the epoxy guy did with that. He made with an epoxy marble. It's just gorgeous from what we can see in the pictures. I know the floor is all done, redone, but take a look at that. I think you'll be very impressed. So that's about all we had. We're going to be talking about leadership marshaled solar panel project. There's some discussion that they may want to put some panels off the school forest to help sustain it. So and we're going to try to bring in the bus and take a look at the bus services and where we're all at is what we'd like to bring in in the future. That's what I have. Anything else from anybody else?
If I could just take a moment, as long as you're making reference to the school forest, Mark, that the, the kind of the reopening, the first event with the school forest project being done is Badger State Games is holding, is hosting out at the school forest this weekend, the snowshoe racing event and fat tire bike racing event as well. Is that right, Ron?
That's correct.
So we're very proud to be hosting that and it's kind of a nice kickoff, first use of the facility after remodeling project.
Cool.
So I should give my fat tire a break there?
So we will move on to new business with the approval of retirements. And earlier this evening, the board, an executive session, looked at a list and what is the boards desire?
Yes, an executive session each month we are presented by administration with our list of retirements, resignations and approval of new employment, first of all. On, I will make a motion as an individual board member, not on behalf of the personnel committee, for the approval of retirements of Amy Fassler, teacher of science, two-thirds time at the high school at the end of the school year, and also of Sarah Kruger, teacher of alternative education at the Alt High School, also at the end of the school year. And that's my motion.
And the second?
One second.
Thank you, the second. But any discussion? I just made note of the fact that it's very season.
Oh, yeah.
Today will be sort of the best. We wonder what they're going to...
Well, we're getting to the end of the year and that's about the time where a lot of our veteran staff members have to ponder that question of retirement. And so we're starting to see that.
I believe we want to thank him for, they're going to retire for, everyone else knows early enough to get out during the lockdown.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate that. Very helpful.
Here we have a motion and a second.
Then we'll go ahead and take the call.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Ms. Yucatis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Crenarty?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And then resignations.
Okay, as an individual board member, again, approval of resignations is on the agenda. And I will let, mention the names. Resignations of Lori Babcock, custodian second shift at Washington, Brittany Hyman, general secretary at Grant, Renee Mortenson, custodian second shift at Nasonville, Donald Murray, teacher assistant, special education at high school, and Amanda Prabelski, teacher assistant at special education at Grant. So I make a motion that those resignations be approved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Then we'll go ahead and take the call.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
Ms. Yucatis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Crenarty?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
And finally, we have approval of employment of new personnel. Deborah Linville, a teacher assistant, health services, special education specialized program at Madison School. So I make the motion of the approval of her employment.
Second. Second. Have that, have that council say, hold the second. Any discussion? I will go ahead and take the call for approval of new personnel.
Dr. Yucatis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Crenarty?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Cheney?
Yes.
And next on the agenda, we have the 2020 State Education Convention Report. And now we did have two board members, Sam Steiner and I went, but we also have administration go. So if the administration has anything they want to go on, and Jenny went also. And she told me a little bit about networking with other board secretaries and assistants to administrators. There's a lot to learn there too.
Can I, can I... Brenna Stark? At, at the suggestion of WASP via email, they suggested that we offer our three, our three takeaways from the convention. It was a fabulous convention. There's so much to learn and there's something for everyone. If there's a hole in your knowledge base of which, well, mine's like Swiss cheese, but trying to fill it is very easy to do there. And so the three, the highlights that I wanted to, to offer, one was one of the, the first keynote speaker that I think we all were just blown away by, Scott McCloud, a educational, a education researcher at University of Colorado, I think, who offered us the big shifts for deeper learning in schools that is really required because of what we see in Gen Z, this newest generation of, that those are the kids that are, individuals that are 10 to 26, and that's like two-thirds of our, of our student population. Four things to consider for big shifts, think about doing deeper thought on problem solving. Second, student agency. These are things that we need to be keeping in mind as we're teaching. Third, authentic work, meaning is this work that is offering a solution, a real solution to a real problem in the community. And it has great examples of how that can work well. And then fourth, must-have technology infused because technology is everywhere. And he offered a wonderful protocol that Kim and I talked about, possibly considering for the students, the, the teachers that are not part of the Maple experience at the middle school to run their lesson plans through. Really, it was really easy to just go through these yes, no questions to kind of get an idea of where you can make your, your technology, your authentic work, your student agency and your higher thinking more realized in your, in your curriculum. And we thought that's something to offer so that everybody's getting a taste of what is happening with the Maple program. So it was really cool. And then, okay, that'll be my first and my second. And then my third was a phenomenal, I would just refer everyone to wasp.org backslash convention to optimizing Gen Z. And it was a wonderful discussion by Jim Framing, who was the business director at Port Washington, of who we are in the generations in terms across several parameters. That was a fabulous comparison of why we have to change the way we teach because of what our first generation of digital natives has experienced, not just the digital part, but living through 9/11, feeling more insecurity about our culture and our society and financial insecurity, living through the, you know, the recession in 2008. It was just a really interesting comparison. I would just direct you to find that and just go through the slides. I actually got the whole talk downloaded because I'm showing it to some other people. Really worth looking at. Also, not just for how we teach, but how we talk to parents who are of various generations. It gave a great comparison from baby boomers to Gen X, Gen Y, Gen Z. It was just fabulous, really, really interesting. That's all.
I have a question. It's not so much a question for the board, but more of a comment. I wonder where we go after Generation Z?
They're totally, it's our way. Ten thousand years haven't gotten named. Do we go back to A perhaps?
You're full, you're totally...
But there's very interesting about Gen Z that he offered. One is, is greater dedication and connectedness to family, which I was surprised by, but that seems to be more of a trait for this Gen Z than previous generations. And, and nothing guaranteed, a little bit more conservative about planning, planning farther for the future because of feeling some financial insecurity. It's just interesting, very interesting.
I'm sorry, I said I wouldn't interject today.
And I said I was going to stop.
And then we also had Mike Drevlo and Pat Sauserman and...
Well, I was just going to say, I, I think what, what I would comment on is I really enjoyed the main general session speaker that we had on Thursday night was a doctor's zow.
Yes, Thursday.
Thursday afternoon.
Yes, I really appreciated his attempt to challenge conventional thinking on educational reform right now. And I liked the sort of medical comparison that he put on our reform efforts, kind of talking about how you may take medication for a condition, but there can oftentimes be side effects. And he really spoke to the fact that he really supported creativity and learning and cautioning us as educators to be thinking about the fact that sometimes some of our approaches and our interventions can have the side effect of taking the fun and creativity out of learning for kids. So I really enjoyed the message that he had to share.
Can I add a quote from him? From his book that is called What Works May Hurt. And he says, "We should treat all children as exceptions to the rule." I love that.
Well, and picking back on that, the other thing I enjoyed about him, he went through a lot of the statistics about the highest performing nations over the years and most of them, you know, and periodically we hear about the Asian countries and, and they always have these high scores that we don't have. So then we try to come up with these improvement plans so that we can compete internationally. But his observation was that here in the United States, we really do have excellence in education. It isn't about testing as much as it is about the drive and the entrepreneurship and the things that we allow...
Innovation and creativity.
Right.
That we allow that.
That we allow in the United States that you don't find in these other countries. So no matter what these tests show, we still excel because of all, you know, and his initial observation before getting to that point was that with all of these initiatives to try and bring us up to compete with these countries, we still score low.
Yeah.
So they weren't working, but they, but we are working because of that individualism and that ability to, you know, for anyone to succeed and try something new in whatever field. And so that was very interesting. Anything else?
I think you covered it well. Thank you.
If anyone wants to hear a really funny Kim Kardashian story from that talk, I will share it after.
I attended quite a few of the financial related sessions, which I typically do. Often I'll give dates on school law, administration, what's going on through the SAA because they can provide us typically, they have to air the capitals, so listening to lobbyists we get a sense of maybe what's going on, you know, in terms of where the legislature might be heading and thinking about various things related to school bills, under legal update, again, listening to attorneys talking about case law and things like that. And then also we attended an evening session that was pretty extensive about the effect of what's going on now as it relates to social media and district issues that are being faced as a result of Shay Lewis, our attorney, and her colleagues from Strang Patterson did a pretty extensive evening workshop about that. There was several hours worth of discussion leading to what's going on as far as some of the challenges that districts are facing with the use of social media and how it's leading over in the school system as far as disciplinary issues and things like that. And then we actually traveled on early to the conference to attend a pre-conference workshop which was put out by Dave Schuler, former superintendent of the Stevens Point School District, now District 214 down in Illinois. And his session was entitled Redefining Ready, which kind of challenged basically the conventional thinking as it relates to what we've always called college and career ready and just basically the idea... And just basically the idea that, you know, perhaps before we make outputs of all it being about, you know, deciding if it's career, deciding if it's onto a university system or college system, do we in fact have accurately identified the outcomes that we should as far as what these skill sets should be? That was the basic premise of the discussion there. And it's very interesting. It gives you pause to kind of stop and think, and maybe take a step back and just sort of reevaluate some of our internal, you know, discussions and decisions about how we're deciding, you know, curriculum and things like that. So, would you kind of dig one for me, maybe?
Thank you. And Kim? Anything?
I don't think this year all made. There's so much, there's so much that we came back with. There's a sense of we're really on the right track. I mean, speaking to exactly what Sam was talking about is what I took out of it is we are preparing kids for the future that we've never had to do before. And it really is going to take transformation, and it's going to take time, and it's going to take a whole new set of skills than what we were raised with, and how you go about doing that, how districts have been successful with that. I'll echo Pat with the preconference that was excellent and definitely worth going to learn about future readiness. What we're doing with academic and career planning in our district, what we can do to improve those practices. All these little things, not bad. Oh, and Jenny, and we won that nice little.
Yes.
And then, we won that.
Yes.
Basically brought something back from.
Yes. And I have to publicly thank Sam Stein for having the truck because.
This is what we want.
Yes.
Colleagues felt that we won this, and we were just going to bring it back somehow. We didn't have a plan for bringing it back. We elected a board member with a truck.
Sam came to the rescue.
You really did.
Of course, with the back room. What a cabinet.
Gail, it's a piece of flex furniture. And we're doing a lot of work with flexible furniture for flex learning environments. And the.
Maybe it was a snack cabinet.
And I had a couple, one workshop that I went to for our student services department was given by the head of the professional organization for Wisconsin, and also some other people who had previously held either the presidency or other offices within that organization. But they pretty much concentrated on two topics. One was restraint and seclusion. Bill 585 is out there. And it's looking at eliminating some language about prevention and experience in administering certain restraints or seclusion, and moving to language that talks about evidence-based and ability to identify prohibited techniques. So, that was out there. The other topic that came up under that category was how we report those because we have reporting requirements from the federal government. And so, they're kind of tightening up on that traditionally. If you have less than five incidents to report in a given school year, because of the low cell size, you reported a zero for one specific purpose, and that is not identifying those kids. Because if they're just a few kids, it's very easy to pick out, oh, who that might have been. And so, you want to avoid that. But by the same token, they had districts in, like New York City and Chicago reporting zero. So, no, that's not true. So, anyway, they are kind of looking at the guidelines on all of that sort of thing. And as far, you must report incidents to the school board without the student's name, but just by numbers. And the DPI can have statistics and report trends. So, you don't report a zero to them because they're just keeping cumulative data to support trends and cumulative data information. The other issue was the dyslexia keeps coming up, and there are several bills, six, maybe 632, 604, 635. And they think that something will pass, but they aren't sure what will pass.
The bill, the dyslexia workbook, did pass and was signed by Governor Evers the other day. That was just this week it passed and was signed.
So, the topic there was these, the question was, how, so if you're supposed to have a two-hour training for your staff, how do you do evidence-based intervention, adoptions? What are the indicators? Who is best to train these people and the paraprofessionals before the school year starts? And they, they kind of understood that parents get frustrated when their students get frustrated and anxious when they can't learn. And so, that's kind of where this came from. But the question that came up is if you're, what is the staffing impact? So, if you're supposed to have a dyslexia specialist, does that mean you can share one that just comes in? And there's no mention of a reading specialist? And yet, typically, your reading specialist would be the one to screen and to carry out some of this. So, those implications for a school district, you know, still have to be worked out because a lot of it takes place in the reading program. And so, that's some of that. The one other comment I would have is on leadership workshops and running effective meetings and whatever. The main traits that I always repeatedly hear have to do with trust and willingness of the board and administration to work through issues together. But as I networked and listened, I have to tell you how grateful I am that I'm in Marshfield. I am grateful for my board. We don't agree on everything, we're not supposed to. But I think there's a high degree of trust and willingness to work through issues, not just among the board members, but with our administrators, all the ones sitting at these tables up here, and all the ones sitting back there in the buildings. We, I truly was counting my blessings as I heard stories and questions from other districts. And so, I just want you guys to know that we have a lot to appreciate. We're grateful for.
Sometimes that is the best part of the experience is having it reaffirmed by, through networking, to have reaffirmed that we're doing things well.
Yes. So, I am very grateful for all these people in this room.
There is a request that we present on how our cell phone policy is going. I had a request from two people at Chikler Conference that they would like us to share what we've got going. Jason, maybe you could talk about that?
How's currently going?
Yeah, just after, for next Jan, for next January, they would love to hear more about our cell phone policy and how, and your data collection and all that. I was bragging about you in a couple of conferences. You should go in and say.
Well, I'll make this, I'll make this final thought as brief as possible. I feel a little frustrated when I see on Facebook news reports or whatever, how far the US education, public education in particular, is lagging behind the rest of the world when I know that we have had some individuals from our district alone that have gone to China and have gone there to help them redefine their curriculum because the students that come here from some of those countries, and I think this could be borne out mainly with some of our own MSEP students, are very good at the straight, hard, cold, fact learning. But in terms of creative thinking, critical thinking, which is needed so much in our businesses today, the students coming over are not doing well. And you'll find that out, reports, do some research. You'll find some reports from major universities that will mention that as well. So, take that comment when you hear it, that kind of, you can hear the little tenor in my voice there, I think. That frustrates me a little bit, especially during these election years when I hear that. Enough said. Do your research.
And that was the point of the speaker that Brian Christensen talked about.
Yes.
And then, the next agenda item is just the WASB resolutions. All but one passed, and they were things like, a very specific one, one, let's talk about being grateful. One district had three board members out of seven resign all at once. So, if it had been one more, if one couldn't show up, the question was, how do you get a quorum to fill those vacancies until the next election? So, for the very narrow purpose of filling vacancies, they talked about redefining quorum as the majority of those, you know, still on the board.
Actively serving.
And that came out of another district, following the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission on school funding, English learner services funding, equalization aid payments scheduled to make it spread out more through the year and in a more timely manner also. Transportation aid for high poverty districts, the Dyslexia Guide Book, the school and school report cards, social emotional learning, mental health categorical aid, meal shaming, social burger certification, licensure, mandatory reporting. That one is, has to do not with changing mandatory reporting, but the training for staff. Whole grade sharing incentive aid, formation of K-8 union high school districts. There's currently a process for converting K-8 union high school districts into K-12 districts, but there isn't a mechanism to go from K-12 to a K-8 unified, I say that wrong, um, union high school. Things are talking about that, student equity statements, of potential blame, glowing kind of pupils. Formula, the one that didn't pass, a lot of discussion on some of these, but particularly this one, was there was a resolution requiring school districts to retire their Native American mascots if the legislature provided money for them to do that. And number amendments meant this, et cetera. Bottom line was just local control and the money part being tied to it because a lot of districts have already done this and expended their own money and et cetera. So, that kind of conversation. So, that one did not pass. But if you have questions about any of these, I, we actually, I went over these with Dr. Christensen and Pat Salserman, had talked with him also. And there were a couple that we voted no on that passed, but that's okay. And so, that's kind of the background. Unless there are any questions that summarizes that. Then we get to move on to overnight and extended trips. So, we have approval of travel to Milwaukee for the regional ocean bowl competition. And I know it says January 2020. And when it asks in the application, when they need to know by, it said as soon as possible. So, I hope you all had a chance to read that. And what is your desire regarding approval of the travel to Milwaukee for the regional ocean bowl competition?
We'll approve.
Second, and second at that step. Then, any questions? We'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnerty?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yucaides?
Yes.
Okay, then the next one is approval of travel to Appleton for the Wisconsin State Robotics Championship. And that is coming up this month. And again, if you have time to read all that.
We'll approve.
Unless there are questions. I'm sorry, it was.
Dale.
Dale and Mark.
And Mark.
Okay, there we go. And we'll go ahead and take the roll.
Mr. Kinnerty?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yucaides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
And the last one is approval of travel to Madison for the Skills USA state competition in April of 2020? Okay, so we have Mark and we have Ms. Chaney.
I was going to go through.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yucaides?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Kinnerty?
Yes.
And last thing on the agenda, Mrs. Steiner, motion to adjourn. Okay.
I can, I think that's all right.
Yeah, I think so.
Bye. Everyone say bye.